We're bald, just like sweat just shows up on the forehead all of a sudden.
Just stand up.
Stand up.
He was so quick, he was done and we were like, okay, well. Ready to go? Okay, it's six o'clock, ready to begin the city council meeting for Riverdale City, April first, two thousand twenty-five. Like to welcome all members of the council. I'd like to excuse Mayor Mitchell today. Uh, I'm councillor Arnold, I'm mayor pro tem, so I'll be chairing the meeting today. Uh, we have all members of the council, the city staff members and two members of the public. Um, we'll start by having our pledge allegiance by Stacy Haas. Your hand over your heart and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, now have our invocation by Brandon Cooper.
Heavenly Father, it's a privilege for us to be here tonight. And as we meet to discuss the business of Riverdale, we ask thee to bless us with wisdom and with candor that we might be able to cooperate and communicate effectively. We express our gratitude to thee for this land and for the freedoms in which thou has bestowed upon us. We ask thee to bless us with remembrance and with gratitude that we may always know from whence our blessings come. We're grateful for this chance that we have to meet. We're grateful for the people who serve in this community, especially those in our public safety departments. We ask thee to protect them, bless them and bless their families that they might have the comfort and peace that comes from the spirit. We are grateful again, Father, for the land and the blessings in which we enjoy the comforts of our life. We ask thee for wisdom again as we meet tonight and we pray for these things humbly in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Cooper, that was nice. Uh, we'll now have a public comment. And if anyone has anything to say, please come to the microphone, state your name, where you live, and please keep your comments to three minutes or so.
That was quick, thank you. Can't say Mr. Mayor, he's gone, Mike Allen, councilman, councilwoman, city, people who take care of us from the fire and the police department, thank you for your service. I live in River Glen, uh, I've been here many years, we've lived here twenty years and I've been here many years before of just this concern of mine and it has to do with the upcoming, um, fire season. Um, I live against the old, um, I guess it's called, uh, I don't know what it's called, used to be called the bird reserve. Uh, I don't know, does the city have the control of that now or is that, uh, still the corp engineer? I don't know who.
I don't know how much we hold that.
So it is still a mitigated wetland area, so it is still under the rules of the corp?
Is it? My concern is the possibility of fire. I know I was, we lived there ten years ago, we had a fire in the backyard and it scared the heck out of a lot of people. Um, luckily our fire department, our police department, which are rock stars, were there and took care of it, but, uh, our concern and I've talked to others is that with the growth of the thicket, the lower lying thicket and the weeds and it could be a real mess if we have a problem. I don't know whose control of that, if it's the city or of the corp or even the citizens could go in there and help clean some of that out. That would immensely help with some of that. I know the mayor lives right in behind it, Mike lives close to it. And, uh, you know, Riverdale is, the city is the river. And, uh, that trail is used by a lot of people, by a lot of local people, by a lot of people that aren't local. I think we've been very lucky in not having the homeless people we've ogden seen just north of us. And I applaud to the city for taking, making sure that doesn't happen, but my only, I just want to bring it to the attention of the city and if there's anything they can do or they can let us know if we can help or spread the word of an evacuation plan or what do we do if we get another fire? That's basically all I had.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll let the mayor know.
Okay.
As well. Um, just so you know, in the past, um, we have, the churches actually gone back there with like youth activities to clean that out. And I would think that anything we do has to go through Sean. Just to make sure that we're not stepping on anybody's toes.
So with the regulation, really the only thing you can take out usually is non-natives. So like anything that's invasive, they would let you usually take out?
Now, we pulled a bunch of dierswood when I was on the youth council.
They would let you do stuff like that. Um, one time they did let us take out, um, some Siberian elms. We did pretty big Siberian elm removal back there, but a lot of the native stuff, like it's what it's supposed to be, so.
Even, even the thicket, the lower lying stuff that's laying on the ground?
It's all supposed, it's habitat, you know, it was there so that the stuff that's there stayed there and it was mitigated because they took out other areas to build where your houses are. And so it's supposed to stay a natural area, but we can check into it and see what can be.
We took out all of our trees a couple of years ago, just because they got so tall and big. If that fire ever got up high in that cotton hole, we'd all be in trouble. So anyway, thank you though.
Thanks.
Thanks. Seeing no others, we'll move on to presentation of reports, uh, the mayor's report. Um, we do have a couple of things we wanted to address. First, we had a kind of a crazy event happen in the trailer court over on the the south side of Riverdale. Um, I don't know if you want to put anything on the record with that or thank other agencies or?
So can't comment too much on the case, but what I can say is we're very grateful for, you know, uh, the fire department, they came out, we're a great asset in helping us kind of just make sure that scene was safe and secure. We had our public works department come out and help kind of board up and secure the structure so we can maintain the integrity of the scene. And, you know, most importantly, I want to thank all the guys that work for Riverdale Police Department. Oh, before we get to there, Weber County Attorney's Office, they were amazing. They sent their attorneys out, they usually come on scene on these type of situations so they can be involved from the start. Their victim advocate, a couple of their investigators that are assigned to their attorney's office came out as well. But, uh, most importantly, I want to thank the officers, their families, they worked tirelessly around the clock. They're still working the case around the clock. And I couldn't be more proud to work with the people I work with. Riverdale's in good hands, they're in great hands with the people we have here, the, the police, the fire, the public works. It, it, the teamwork is amazing in the city. And individually at our department, like I says, it was a well-oiled machine as far as, uh, getting things done now. Our hearts are broken for the, the lady that lost her life, but we're, our hearts are filled with joy that we were able to recover those kids and get them where they need to be and give them a chance. So anyways, that's what I would comment on is just, we just got a great group of people here in the city. And when we have these events, everybody chips in, I mean, even city managers calling, asking me what we need, making sure we have what we, what we need to do our jobs and just encouraging us. And it just goes all the way across the board, so. Well, just want to thank everybody, especially, especially my guys, man, they and gals. And the gals at the office too, they, they stayed like, like shally. She's supposed to go home, you know, I didn't ask her to stay, but she stayed. You know, she's doing a lot of stuff, issuing that amber alert, doing a lot of the back work for us and she just knew there was a need and she, she stayed to do it, so it, it takes a lot of teamwork and we got a great team, so.
Also recognize, uh, when I was there, Ogden Fire was there, Rose City Police, I mean, a lot of interagency things to recognize them. Uh, one other thing that we'd like to recognize is Chief Warren, if you could come back up. There was something I heard about the chief of the year, small department, something for.
Start off with Steve is an amazing writer, he, he, he nominated me for it. But really what it boils down to is we have the department of the year. That was proven this week by the dedication of all these officers. They make every one of us in this room look good. They're dedicated, they're, they're selfless, uh, their, their integrity is at the highest level. And like, there's multiple cases we had this week and they met every expectation beyond, whether it was the homicide, the silver alert. We had another young lady try to, um, commit suicide off a bridge and one of the officers risked their life hanging over the side of it to, I mean, it just, it just goes on and on, so. The credit really belongs with the officers of the city. They make everyone in this room look good, including myself, so they deserve the credit. Steve's a good writer.
Well, and one other thing they're multitasking is they told me to slow down on Ritter Drive.
Good, see they're doing the job.
So they're doing high and low and it's really good, so.
Councillor, if I could, just quickly, um, I had this talk with him last week when we were down there getting ready for the award. And, and I, and I recognize our guys and I recognize how professional they are, but there's always one guy who coordinates all that. And that's him, and that's why he was well deserved, he really was. I, I, I used the example of the cyber kidnapping, which was extremely unique in the United States. And they had that thing solved in less than two weeks, so, uh, that kind of stuff doesn't happen. And the same thing with this murder this week. As I mentioned during our break there, he was to be receiving that award on Tuesday night and that murder occurred on Monday. And I was in full panic mode thinking he wasn't even going to make it down there, but, uh, they were able to solve it in time that we got him down there, so. Uh, credits to, to Casey, not, not just these guys, to all of them, but certainly the man who leads the, the fort over there, so.
And you're a good guy too. Okay.
serves a little hand.
I'm kind of an emotional guy, sorry, every now and again I get choked up, I apologize.
Okay, moving along to city council assignment reports. Anyone have anything for this meeting? I have one for Bart. Mosquito board, we need to get them out, they were, I got attacked by mosquitoes the other night while I was working in my yard. What do we, what do we do to have them hit something or spray something or?
You want them to dump it on your house?
I did the other night.
Mosquito abatement is two parts, one is larvicide, killing the larva and the other is killing the, the stuff that, you're killing a, a mature mosquito. What we're seeing now is actually stuff that was reconstituted from the freeze, I mean, they, these hatched last year, were in hibernation, if you will, and are out. And this is kind of short-lived. The, how they treat, uh, live mosquitoes is with the trucks, the smoker, uh, the fogging machines. And, um, they fired up a couple and, you know, they're different areas get it quicker than others. But if you, if you want to, if you go to mosquito abatement district website, Weber, I'm sorry, Weber, there's a number on there, you can call it and, and you can, or you can either go online or call it and tell them your address and they will put that on the schedule. And right now they're responding pretty quickly.
Well, okay, I'll make a call tomorrow. No, that'd be great, thank you.
Yeah, and especially like they, I've asked them to do Riverdale Park where the school is last, like last year and they, and they did. For the, you know, because the kids in the playground when they were, they were out during the day, but, and, and they're pretty responsive.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to, uh, Riverdale City Police Department grant and resource officer funding for FY two thousand twenty-five, Chief Warren.
You probably pull that slide up just so I can reference it, so. These are things that we have done pretty much my, most of my career. Um, we're always looking ways that we can save money and, and get revenue to provide better services. And so I just tried to do a recap of what we've done for the year. Um, as she's pulling it up, one of the big ones that we do every single year is the DUI shifts and the seatbelt shifts, those are funded through grant money through the state of Utah and some of that money is also trickled down through the federal government. So what that allows us to do is it allows us to put more officers on the road. Their focus is, is to be looking for DUI, um, DUIs or seatbelts if it's the specific shift. And we actually have, have some for crosswalks as well. And so it just gives us more officers in the area, it helps keep the road safe, helps keep people with their seatbelts, uh, wearing their seatbelts, deter drunk driving. And then I guess is the crosswalk one's always kind of fun too, it kind of slows people down through our crosswalks. The top of the list there, we have JAG grant, we were able to buy ballistic shield. It's amazing how much things cost now. I could have bought two of those shields for that price two years ago, three years ago. And the one shield was more, so I think they see the, the need and their inflation, they're just driving the prices up. So we're able to get one shield out of that. Uh, the next one, line item is mental health services. So I applied for a grant with, uh, utilized the fire department as well as kind of a joint grant. And we're able to get some funding for mental health for first responders. Now, we have EAP already, which is through our insurance, but what this does is it allows us to have a specialized unit that's, that specializes in dealing with first responders. And so we're able to generate or gather twenty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. We still have some of that money left, we're able to carry it over to the next year. And so what that does is like today, for instance, we had a debrief at the police department to debrief, um, critical incident, this homicide. And so they bring in a councillor, we're able to have all the officers, dispatchers, fire, firemen, CSI workers come in and kind of talk as a group. They also specialize in individual counseling, so if we have a situation where there's a crisis with an officer, they can directly reach out to this company and they have somebody who specializes with law enforcement. Whereas maybe with EAP, we might get someone who's a family practitioner. The other thing it allows us to do with this money was, uh, we do check-ins, we actually have check-ins in two weeks. So every year we're mandating our officers check in twice a year. They just do a little sit-down with the councillor, spend like fifteen minutes, they can talk about sports, they can talk about the weather. The idea is that if you go to the doctor, you might ask the doctor a question about like, you know, if you have a problem. So it kind of just opens the, the door for maybe seeking some help.
Are you using the first responders first, is that who does?
Yes, first responders first is who our contract's with, so that grant will run out, but it's, uh, saved us a significant amount of money over the last year. And, uh, it's got the program up and running, so that was been great. Uh, LIDARS, we actually had one of our officers, um, write this grant proactively, Officer Shears. He loves to do, uh, traffic enforcement, we have several LIDARS at our police department. But if you have a ladder on your car, it's just a nice tool and what that is is more of the laser one, not the radar, the LIDAR is more of a, a laser, speed mechanism, so we were able to buy five of those to grant he obtained through the state of Utah. And, uh, we talked about the DUI shifts. ICAC, so small grant, will probably shoot for more money this year. But we have an officer assigned as a liaison through the internet, internet crimes against children task force. So they gave us some funding to where we can put that towards training, we can put towards equipment. We've decided to put it towards, um, I can't remember, it's, it's a box that you put a cellphone in. So in today's world, we seize a cellphone, people can remote in and wipe the phone remotely. We can put it in a, it's a Faraday box, I think is what it's called. We can put the phone inside this box and it will basically make it so it won't connect and we can manipulate the phone inside of this box to make sure we don't lose evidence, so we're going to probably put it towards that. And, uh, most of our cases now, big cases, we're, we're analyzing oh, you know, every phone that's involved and each phone probably five or six different types of warrants. So it's going to be useful. And then the last one there is the Utah Military Academy Resource Officer. Um, like I explained before, we didn't fill that position a couple of years ago when notified you that we're putting a resource officer in there. Based upon, we wanted to make sure that, uh, the service, that, that the contract was going to continue, we're, we're in a three-year contract right now. And, uh, I didn't want to fill the position right away because I want to make sure they're committed. So far, as you guys have read, read in the passalongs for UMA, it's been a great partnership. Uh, we're into our second year, getting ready to start a third. And so as of right now, that money's just kind of coming in and offsetting the cost of our, of our police department. We haven't added anyone per se, we just reassigned them until we can reassess where we're at financially and, and hopefully add an officer when that time comes. But we, we didn't want to get too far ahead of ourselves and make sure we had a commitment. But, uh, this year we're getting seventy-two thousand, next year I think it was like eighty-five thousand. And so I think the total cost of an officer is roughly a hundred and fifty. Um, and then we'll renegotiate that contract at the end of the year. It'll go up with, with, uh, the cost of living and other expenses as well. So down there at the bottom, looks like we got about a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Not a ton of money in the grand scheme of things, but we're, we're trying to do our best to try to offset the costs and save money and provide better services, so. Any questions?
Questions, thank you, Chief.
Thanks.
Uh, moving on to the protest update, Mr. Brooks.
I'll, I'll start this one off, Casey might want to jump in, I can just give you the non-police opinion and my observations as this thing went down. So we did receive word that that protest was coming up at Tesla. And so obviously Casey and I have been talking a lot, even coming back from St. George that day after he'd received his award, we were on the phone quite a while. Just, he keeps me updated on those kind of things. We ended up meeting again with the Tesla people onsite on Friday, went over everything. But I don't think a lot of people in the public, as well as you guys, understand the amount of work that goes into these things. There was a diagram laid out, we knew where everybody was, where all the officers were, we had the local jurisdictions, neighboring jurisdictions on call. I mean, this thing was planned out to a T. Everything that would have happened and could have happened was, was prepared for. Surveillance, there was just everything, we reached out to all the businesses up there, which I think they were grateful for because they were nervous about that, how it was going to affect them. Again, and we stationed people in front of their places where we had to, the barricades were brought in for those reasons, but, uh, again, it's just a, it's a show of what that department does, this was impressive. This is the second big mass gathering or protest that we've had in the last couple of years and, and it's just shocking how well-prepared they are. And if something would have gone badly, we were okay, they were ready to go. And it's just comforting for us as, as staff to know, you know, how professional this department is. Again, this falls back on Casey's shoulders and, um, we're very blessed to have him, to have all the guys we have. And I, I just wish the community could really see what they do to protect our citizens and our community and our, our businesses and residents and visitors even. It was just very, very impressive, I don't know what else you wanted to add on that, Casey? There was, I wanted to say one thing about that surveillance thing, just because at some point in time we may want to look at one of these, but there's a, there's a a company, it's a local company here in Ogden that, uh, provided free of charge a, a machine that they pull up behind a trailer that's got a tower on it and it can surveil anybody and everybody that's there. Again, not that we want to stop these kind of things because people have their constitutional rights. But if by chance, you know, something went bad, we, we need evidence to, to pursue these things. And this individual showed up, didn't charge us anything, set up and was stationed there the whole time. I mean, basically we were watching the whole event. And if something had gone bad, we would, we would be protected to go to court if we needed to, to, to make sure that, uh, we were able to recover any damages and stuff that, that happened. But again, kudos to them, this is just the Casey Warren night, but, uh, anything else you want to add on that, Casey? It was just, it was phenomenal and I just wanted you guys to know that, uh, we were prepared. Didn't amount to anything, it was kind of anticlimactic, you know, fairly small crowd, wasn't that big a deal. But, uh, we just didn't know what to expect. You get a request for a permit, that's all we know. And they give you an estimation of how many people are going to come and we have to prepare for that. And, uh, that's what we did and we were ready and things went well, thank goodness, for all of us.
Okay. Need a food truck there next time or something?
Yeah, so as we reached out to businesses, again, we don't want to try and influence them because they may feel that that's something they're, they want to participate in even, but we didn't need to know if they wanted us to protect them and make sure that people weren't going into their parking lots. It's like America First is a perfect example that we've got power lines up there in that construction area that wasn't very far from there that we can't have people around that. And obviously they were very concerned about that. So anyway, we approached all the businesses and they all say, pretty much said, no, we don't want them in our parking lots, don't want them there and that. Harley was different, Harley said, we're going to get a food truck, we're just going to have a big old party, so they were ready to go. It was pretty entertaining, but good for them, you know?
I will say that the organizers of the protest, the group that's based out of Ogden, they, uh, were, you know, they were well-planned, open-minded to some of the things that we needed them to do to keep it safe. And so, you know, it's their constitutional right to, to, to do this, but I did appreciate the fact that they were willing to work with us. And like I says, we were prepared for the worst because we don't know if people are going to come from wherever. But, uh, outside, they were, few of them a little loud, there was, was a few vulgarities, but, uh, all in all, the protesters that showed up are probably members of the community here in Weber County and I, I think they behaved themselves accordingly, so I was grateful for that.
So were there two protests or were there just one?
There was just one, so we, they, they.
Here you mean, just one here?
Yeah, yeah, you're talking about like two groups?
Yeah, I.
No, I, I think part of what happened is where Tesla's not finished, the road's not finished there. That was just a mud pit down there and so we'd kind of indicated to them, you need to move further south. And so they did, but I think they also saw that just being right there on that road wasn't very effective, so they kind of worked their way out on the Riverdale Road to get a little bit more exposure would be my guess.
So who, who got the permit?
Um, this organization.
That, that was protesting.
They, they initially applied in Ogden City, it was, uh, what is it, the fifty-five oh one group? And so they wanted to have some people on Riverdale Road because there's more visibility and obviously Tesla. We didn't want them marching back and forth because that's a safety concern. And so you might have saw the cones as you drove by, the reason we put those cones out there is to get them across the street because there's really not a safe crosswalk right there. And we didn't want them in the roadway, so they kind of wanted to stretch the whole roadway, but there wasn't a safe spot due to the logistics of the roads.
I just thought that there were, that there were going to be counter protesters?
We, we were ready for that, but no, there was a couple of van that drove by a few times.
Yeah, and we were approached actually, but on Friday while we were up there by a gentleman who was prepared to, to organize one and we were just going to say, that's, that's, we're okay, we got it under control. We didn't, we didn't want to mix the oil and water if we could keep it separated, so.
You need a permit to counter protest?
Well, you don't really need a permit to protest, if you kind of organize, you kind of, you, you organize an event, yeah, probably so, but it's your right to protest. If you want to exercise your constitutional rights and march on a sidewalk, you don't need a permit for that. It's just if they start taking extra steps and so, yeah. At this point, they tried to apply one for Ogden City and it was way down the road, so we just kind of let them come in without the permit because really we can't stop them if they show up to, it's their right. So, but, uh, hopefully, like I says, that we won't have many more of these, but it was a good, good, good thing because we got a lot of good planning in and like I says, credit all the staff, Steve was, he was great, he was right involved. Uh, the mayor came out and was involved, just, just wanted to see what was going on and, and, uh, he had some good insight, so it, it went really smooth, so.
Another question, previously there, uh, I noticed that there was a car parked on the curb with, uh, some signs on it. And I was, I was going to look up what the timing on parking on the street is and whether.
He technically be, he actually showed back up and wanted to, because he'd been coming every Saturday, I think every Saturday and parking across the street is where you're talking, kind of by the power poles?
Um, the one, the one that I saw, I have a couple of pictures, it, he was parked on the same side as Tesla, just down just far enough where there was, there's curb and gutter.
Yeah.
Okay.
And he had, and I just, I just wondered if, if, uh, anybody had complained about it or if you guys had, um, looked, looked at it to see if there was, if he was leaving the car parked there too long or if there's.
We hadn't received any complaints or anything, to my knowledge.
Most likely there wouldn't be a law violation there unless he was obstructing traffic in some way, then maybe we'd look at it, but if he's just parked there.
And I don't think he posted either, the time limit.
Right.
Yeah, so, yeah, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you for all your due. Move on to community development update, Mr. Cooper. Um, move on to community development update. Mr. Cooper.
Yes, thank you. Just a couple. Um, we are coordinating a, a few ribbon cuttings that will be upcoming in the next few weeks. One is for the DXL Big and Tall, where the old Aarons used to be. Uh, they're getting close to occupancy permit and we're working with their team to try to figure out what they want to do for ribbon cutting. So stay tuned on that as well as Good Vets just down the road. Uh, they'll be uh, receiving their certificate of occupancy soon as well and we're coordinating that. We did get smittles from Trader Joe's. I know that's on everybody's mind. Um, that we've received a couple of smittles, one for the core and shell work, which happens um, by the contractor uh, assigned to the ownership of the building. So that's Ashley's contractor doing the core and shell work. And then we received another application for work on the inside for the Trader Joe's contractor to do the Trader Joe tenant improvement build out. So we anticipate that going well and they are telling us that it could be October. I reached out to the Vice President of Marketing, I believe is her name or her title uh, for Trader Joe's to kind of understand what their process is for announcing new stores. And they, she said that they do not announce new stores um, prior to three to six months before the store opens. And so we'll likely to see a Trader Joe's formal announcement sometime in August. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to consent items. Uh, consideration to approve meeting minutes for March fourth, twenty twenty-five council work session and March fourth, twenty twenty-five council meeting. Any changes or amendments to the meeting minutes for those meetings? Yeah, motion to approve would be in order.
Move to approve the minutes from, uh, from the council meeting and, and the, and the work session um, for March fourth. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Um, Ms. Marigoni, would you, are we just all those in favor?
Yes.
Say yes. Any opposed? I noticed somewhere in the, in the packet, there's a yea and nay check off too for.
I might add too, Alan, while you're acting as the, the mayor pro temp, you still vote. You're still entitled to vote.
Yes. Put me, put me down as a yes. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to action items. Action item number one, consideration of resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero four, accepting the annual municipal wastewater report. Mr. Douglas.
Thank you. Um, so this is a mandated report. The state requires us to turn in every year. They also make sure that we bring it to you as part of the report. It has to be brought to the city council and approved. Pretty much the same as last year, not many changes. I think the highlight of the report is we didn't have any minor incidents or any major incidents with backups or anything that was reportable. And that's the goal with wastewater is to keep it flowing downstream and not have a backup that um, affects our residents. So if you have any questions, I'll try and answer them for you.
Any questions? If not a motion would be in order. Move to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash oh nine, adopting the annual municipal wastewater report.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Marigoni, would you pull the council please?
Counselor Hanson?
Yes.
Counselor Richter?
Yes.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Stevens?
Yes.
Counselor Hoss?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Uh, action item number two, uh, we'd need a motion to untable this um, discussion and possible action concerning Riverdale Bike Trails. Um, is there a motion to untable? Move to untable the discussion on the Riverdale Bike Trails. Okay, you have a motion, you have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Oh, all those in favor? Please manifest it by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed? Okay, it is on the table. Um, Mr. Statean, would you like to come up? And I guess we turn it over to Mr. Brooks and see if there's any developments. Um, Mr. Statean has said that he doesn't have any yet and was waiting for something from the city.
I can just give you what I have, which isn't a whole lot. We did reach out to our insurance company. This is about a month ago that Mike was in here. Um, we reached out with our insurance company right after that, asked them, is this something you will insure? Their answer basically is we'll ensure anything that you guys do, as long as you do it right, was kind of their answer. We said, well, what does that mean? Well, obviously they want it engineered and however, we would do any other project and make sure we do it correctly. So that was kind of all we got from them. Which is kind of what I expected, you know, and that's kind of why the last time when we did the smaller track there, one of the concerns I had was the engineering of it and how that came forward and just making sure that everything's done right. So that when we get into court, we can't get accused of not doing our due diligence basically. And so that's where we're at.
Mr. Statean, do you have anything?
Yeah, Mayor Mitchell sent me this text shortly after the meeting where he visited, arrived just uh, March, just, the text is March fifth. Said that the city is having a hard time reconciling some things. Basically they feel like if we are going to acknowledge the trail, it needs to be accepted like any other amenity such as a splash pad or other recreational feature. It would obviously need to be engineered and built to a defined standard. It would also need to be maintained on a schedule. They are still worried about insurance and accidents, but I think there are examples of city amenities with risks, skate parks. Accepting it would require the city a council approval. It seems to me that all of those challenges could be overcome and as we see, you know, this is nothing uh, out of the ordinary for other cities. It's just a natural use trail. It's not a, it's not, and not even the same category risk as a skate park, honestly. But, and then he goes on to say that the next challenge is because it is an official amenity, it would fall under the new parks ordinance. The city is very leery of setting the precedent of waiving fees, even if it is for maintenance or design. I wish I had better news. I'm happy to get you on the agenda again if that's how you want to proceed. Um, I think it was Braden suggested I talk with Rich Taylor about the new city parks ordinance and how that would or would not come into effect at this location. And what Rich told me was that that ordinance was primarily focused on the use of fields, not ball field particularly, but the, the city park field areas by sports teams and other organizations that would monopolize that area and keep the public from being able to use it. And that was why the fee structure was put into place. I talked with him about the history of the mountain bike team and the, and how we have used the um, amphitheater in area around there for activities. And he said, all you would need to do for that is to reserve the amphitheater. So there's nothing new there. I talked to him about how we have staged practices from the parking lot of the bike park and gone to ride on the trails to the south, on the Riverside Trail, the um, the bike park and all around on those features and our city amenities. And again, he's, he said there was no, that, that was not affected by this ordinance, that it was really just focused on regulating the use of the fields that has been unregulated and had become problematic due to uh, organized sports teams and schools using those fields. So for what it's worth, um, I would say if you don't want to hear it from me, you want to hear it straight from Rich, talk to Rich more about it. But he didn't see any concerns with us doing our annual maintenance on the Riverdale Bike Park and even expanding that to be maintenance on this trail system. Um, should it be accepted by the city? Now, um, as far as a maintenance or inspection schedule, natural surface trails take care of themselves with very minimal work. If they are being used, that keeps the vegetation from growing back onto the trails with perhaps one or two days walking through with hands, snips and snipping things back once, once or twice a year. But um, that easily falls within the scope of trail service that any of the various trail have groups, mountain biking teams and other organizations are capable of doing. And I'm sure that we could find one without looking too hard, that'd be willing to maintain this on a schedule for you if that's one, if that is a concern.
Okay. Any, any questions?
I have a question. I apologize. I wasn't here when this was first on the agenda, but I guess my question in that area would be, is, is this a long-term commitment? Because I know that we are unsure of what the future of that area or the development of a park or what might change over there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any way based upon what we've talked about and plans, even if it was a, a regular park. And I don't see where we could ever make this a permanent commitment on the city's park. And I don't know that Mike's even looking for that, but I'd, I would say no.
Okay.
It's not a trail easement. It's not a conservation easement. It's just a city's permission and consent for the use of the property on a temporary basis at will.
So there's, there's a few changes that they were going to make because they were using, extended onto the property, the private property. And when they cleared out that kind of stuff, it messed up the trail. So they were just doing a couple little connections to make it so it was completely on Riverdale City's property. So.
The trail last summer became overgrown because it was the pieces that were cut out by the developers and blocked off, made it so it wasn't usable and nature started to reclaim the land. Um, we're facing a time clock in that if we don't get out there and do this maintenance this spring, it'll be far more overgrown and it'll become a much more difficult process to reclaim that trail for, for recreational use by the cities, by the city and other users.
Is there an engineering standard? When they're talking about engineering, what, what type of engineering standard would go off of? I mean, is there?
Good question. Um, if you take a look at the drawing that I submitted in time for, for the last meeting, I had listed on there, the International Mountain Biking Association criteria for the different difficulty level of natural surface trails. And the standards include the um, the percent grade over the long, long distances. So a beginner trail can't have so much climbing to it that beginners can't do it, for example. Uh, criteria for um, weather features, how much vertical break a feature can have. And I think it's uh, up to twelve or eighteen inches for an intermediate trail. So you can roll over a rock or something like that. So there are standards and it's not so much a matter of providing design drawings as much as it is having an alignment for the trail, which I think is already achieved. And then the criteria by which the trail has to be cleared and grubbed and, and maintained to meet those standards. Um, I, I do as an engineer, I do have the design manual from the um, International Mountain Biking Association for natural surface trails and that would be, be a guiding document in any of the work that is done.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Could staff have any other input on it?
I, I don't know that we have a lot of input on it. I mean, it's, when we wrote the park ordinance, we weren't anticipating this. This was not even consideration. So I'm not surprised that it would, it would cover it. What does concern me a little bit is the special event portions of that because, and, and I don't know how big these crowds are, but um, once we meet that certain threshold, we don't, everybody's required to go through that hoop uh, and, and file that application for the special event. We have our police review, fire reviews, everybody reviews it. Um, and that, and that ordinance does require insurance as well. So that would be a concern because I think that one would still apply in this case. Um, whereas the park might not, although we might want to look at that in the future, but it's just one of those things that we, we hadn't anticipated. The other thing that concerns, concerns me a little bit is where we're right on the edge of that property is we can't give them permission to go on private property either. Um, really technically they've been trespassing on ours because we've never given them permission to do that. And so it's a little bit concerning that that's even taken place and, and I don't even want to give the impression that uh, Box would give them permission to do that. I mean, they came in and did that uh, remediation or whatever they called it for their own reasons. So um, I would be concerned if they disturbed any of that as well, especially where that's on private property because now we're starting to get into criminal areas. So there's still some things there that we got to be concerned about. I just, I don't know that it's a major deal, but is it something the city wants to accept or, or start as, you know, something that we've approved and signed off on? Again, I don't know if Sean's got some comments on uh, you know, taking care of these things because I know that, I think those guys are probably, our guys have put in a little bit more work on that smaller tract than we ever anticipated. And I'm a little bit worried that on the bigger one, it might even be worse. I don't know. I don't, I don't know until these things play out. You know, a lot of times we don't know these for a couple of years down the road, but um, we, we have concerns. Are they major concerns? I don't know based on what we know, but uh, there are still issues there that we got to address.
Would it be worth taking the time to have staff work with um, Mr. Statean to address some of those concerns about the event permits, about all those different things so that we have better, at least as much insight as we can have without having moved forward yet before we actually take action on it?
Well, I think we would because the last thing I'd want to do is to see them violate the ordinance on the special event. When we just don't know, I don't know how big these crowds are. I mean, other than Mike's talked more with the mayor than he has with me. Sean's going to be concerned about some of these things. So I certainly think we need to talk. But whether or not they're deal breakers, I don't know. I, I have no idea.
I, I can answer so many of these questions right now if you'd like, uh, but this doesn't have to be repeatedly tabled. Uh, the, the, first of all, I wanted to clarify, some of Steve's pronoun use was rather ambiguous as far as they were trespassing. They were doing work without permission, they and so on. The mountain bike team that I coach does not do work without landowner's permission. And so um, this area has been public recreate, publicly recreated on by the Disc Golf and other groups for years and years and years. So it was more of a matter of recreating on city and private property than trespassing, if you were, if you will. Uh, those who were building trails there without city permission, absolutely. I could, I would consider that trespassing, which is why we are here to ask for city permission. Um, as I said in the last meeting, we want this all to be above the table. Everything to be by the book. Uh, we're not trying to sneak anything in and we certainly are not asking to occupy any of that private property with the trail. In fact, what we are asking to do is to restore connectivity between the pieces of trail that are on public property. With regards to special events and so on, the um, the mountain biking league on a state level takes care of any event permits that, that are necessary and works with any jurisdictions, trail organizations and landowners for that. For the larger events, our practices for our team are typically about anywhere between ten to sixty kids and maybe twenty coaches. So these aren't large events that would require any sort of health department or any other special approvals. They're just team practices and that's, we're not proposing to have any large events there. Just a matter of dig days for our smaller, for our groups that we want, need to do in order to restore the trail connectivity for the city.
Did you say sixteen or sixty?
Uh, anywhere between ten to sixty. Sometimes we've had actually as many as, well, let's see, I think our largest practice last year was seventy or seventy-five kids. We usually get about thirty to forty percent attendance and we have roughly a hundred kids on the team. Registration's open now, so we don't know where it'll fall out this year, but. And then for every five, for every four kids, there's one coach.
Okay.
What was your timeframe? You wanted to start this when?
Well, I would like to do this work on the uh, twenty-third of April. Is it twenty-third? The last Saturday in April and the first Saturday in May are the dates that are most convenient for several reasons. One is that that's when the, the, the ground hasn't dried out and hardened up yet. It's when the vegetation can be trimmed back in time, at just the right time so that it stops growing in so much. If you trim too early, it all grows back in later. If you come later, there's just a ton of vegetation. Uh, the other reason is that's the window of availability for the teams as they're getting ready for summer practice season to start. The dig days are typically in April and May.
I, I think um, are you, so you're still the chair of the bike committee. It's been kind of dormant.
Ad hoc active transportation committee.
Yeah. I, I think I, I would like to see it go and um, but turn the maintenance and all that over to you through Sean. You know, in your group, your team, you know, all the volunteers that you have, that you're communicating with Sean, that, you know, he's really not asking his people to go over there. That, I mean, you're um, you've always shown that you have the highest level of standards and things of what you're doing. And, and I think it would be great to, I mean, I, I have a bunch of kids in my neighborhood that are a part of your team and I, I think we should give you the go-ahead, especially to, you know, get this thing carved out and all that kind of stuff. And then I'm, I'm sure you would bring it to us if you're running into any problems or anything like that and communicating with Sean. So I, I would like to see it go actually.
Is it worth having a, an agreement memorialized where it talks about maintenance and if it's no longer maintained by that group that?
Would, you're an attorney and I'm an attorney. We would obviously say yes on that one. So. I would make mention that, that fifty or more is what does trigger our special events permit. Yeah.
So I'll talk to the league about what they're, how they work with that because all the, all the teams regularly have practices larger than fifty and they, they typically will work out a special event permit for the year or something like that for practice on different trail organizations. But I can put you in touch with their, their attorneys and their agreement writers as far as use of this for practices. And that, and that is a separate issue. I think the first issue is fixing the trail and making it ridable. And then as far as practice use goes, that can be handled separately.
And, and I also think, one of the things we talked about when we were talking about this ordinance with using property or whatever is to trade um, work, care for the um, facility or whatever, for any cost or anything like that. So, I mean.
Yeah, I wouldn't anticipate that we'd ever do any work down there, to be honest. Well, that's why we'd need that covered in an agreement because Sean and him have enough to do in the summer. They don't need more like this. So.
Yep. So Mike, do they have insurance?
The league? They have insurance for the teams for the trail use, yes.
So like when they're having an organized practice, they would be able to provide us with that?
We are under insurance, yeah. We are under insurance, yeah. Every year we get our insurance renewed. I'm waiting for our team's license to be renewed before we start our practices. Usually happens sometime in April. Today was the first day that rider registration was open for the league.
The Disc Golf and that in the past, when they have an event or they have practice, they put in for a special rent permit and then they provide us with their insurance. So if somebody's injured, they're covered and so.
Yeah, we do have insurance.
Things we had to ask for on that permit, so.
Yeah, that is a big, that's the whole reason there is the bike league, so that the coaches and the landowners, everybody are insured and protected.
So would we, would we want to, and kind of following up with what Councilor Hanson was talking about, would we want to officially acknowledge the fact that there is a trail there? Would that be sufficient to then allow Sean and and Mike to get together to, you know, for him to do the work on the trail?
I think that's why we wanted this on the agenda, because we're not going to recognize that as staff. That's something you guys got to do. If you feel that's something you want to open up to, then then that's where we need the input from.
And we've, we've always supported Bonneville High School with even even their New Year's Eve party and things like that. And to to say, hey, we're going to turn over this property that we don't use at all to you guys and allow you to, you know, carve it into something, knowing that, you know, when we finally have the money for a park or whatever it is down there that we do, that we're going to claim it back. And which could be years down the road. I mean, the the kids that are riding the thing now could be in Mike's position petitioning this, you know, when this happens.
And I think that's my concern about recognizing it as an official amenity. Because if we're talking about it, just to allow it to move forward for their use, for their practices and things like that, I think that's great, but I just don't want anyone to get confused about the longevity of it. That, you know, there's a lot of things in the future that may come or may not come. Or it's just so up in the air right now for all of us that we've been talking about. And so I just wouldn't want anyone to get the wrong opinion. So maybe if there's a way to acknowledge it, that it exists, but it's not a permanent, maybe not a permanent facility.
Even if it was an annual thing?
Subject to annual repairs and weekly inspection or something like that. And as long as we provide those records.
Maybe even, or is that too much?
I mean, I think we can draft around that. I'm not that concerned about it. I mean, we want to know what the council's position is. We've made that real clear with the Disc Golfers since I've been here, that that is not a permanent use. You know, if if we don't do anything with it, you're welcome to use it. But other than that, when the city's ready to move on that, it's gone.
Yeah.
It's like how many years they've created kind of a cool amenity down there, so.
Yeah.
For sure. And they're they're a good partner. They've been a good partner too, just like Mike has been in the past. The Disc Golf, they're they're well aware that that could go away anytime. They did come to the council to get it approved, kind of like what Mike's doing. But they was also under the standing, understanding. And so maybe if you make a motion that it's in there, that it's not a permanent use or something, they've always felt like the Disc Golf was a privilege and they would use it as long as they could, so.
That seems to be great. So did we have, when we approved the Disc Golf thing, was there any written thing or?
I know that I, it's been so long ago. I wished I could tell you that, but.
I know, I know that we had events that they came in and had like a full tournament and they had to bring in restrooms and I think.
Yeah, they they do special event, anything that was very large, you know, that was over the 50. They did a special event permit for and did insurance. But when they first build it, they came into the council for use of that area. And I know they was told, because it's been brought up constantly, that, you know, it could end any anytime. So I think as long as everybody's on the same page, nobody feels like they get shafted if something goes away, so.
If I recall correctly, there are special events. Statute came about because of those Disc Golf people and they started bringing in those big activities. And we were having restrooms brought in and all kinds of crazy stuff. And we had no idea what was going on, so that's when that come about.
So can can we ask staff to draft a resolution that would allow us to acknowledge the fact that it exists, but we don't have, but it's hands off for us? If they want to maintain it, it is at their discretion?
You can ask us whatever you want, Stacy. I'm sure I can draft it up.
Is anybody else okay with that?
And I think, so if we just did a consensus now, until you did that and did a consensus to have Mike and his team move forward, so they not waiting till the 15th or beyond or all that kind of stuff that they can do, they're planning to get any type of.
It looks.
Mobilized?
It looks like on the calendar, if Steve drafted that, you could have it done at the next meeting. And that would be before his dig dates anyway. So you could have it memorialized and be in good shape by when his dig dates are, look in the calendar.
Okay. For the 15th?
Perfect. Thank you.
So I look at this as a two-part thing then, so I'm going to have to draft a resolution about the park and, you know, the non-permanency of that. Plus also an agreement directly for Mike, because I want that one separate on what what we agreed to between us.
I think whatever you feel covers the city for insurance purposes.
And engineering and all that stuff, okay, yeah.
The agreement, that agreement, we wouldn't need to.
No, just the resolution, right.
Okay, yeah, that's what I'm thinking that.
So we just, for us to get a consensus to put it on the agenda for the 15th?
If I had a consensus, that would give us direction on that.
So all those in favor to move forward for the 15th of April, thumbs up?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous.
Thank you, everybody, very much for your time and consideration.
I would, I would say keep in contact with Braden to make sure that, you know, everything that you're looking at is, you know, covered and and he'll be with the city to work out well.
I'll be out of town for the rest of this week, but I will reconnect with city staff on Monday and work this thing through. Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to action item number three, discussion and consideration of resolution 2025-10, accepting city's vision for long-term land use as reflected in the Wasatch Front Regional Council Wasatch Choice Vision.
Thank you, sir. It's not as scary as it sounds. It's very, very benign. You're all aware of Wasatch Front Regional Council. They're an AOG, an association of governments. They cover Box Elder, Weber, Salt Lake City, Tooele, Davis, and I think that's right, and Morgan Counties in terms of their jurisdiction. And as I've explained in the in the transmittal, they're, they're a convener of of people essentially. And they're largely focused on on transportation connectivity. In October of last year, they held a workshop and their workshop was regionalized. So they went across all of the areas that's in their jurisdiction and convened folks from local governments to join this workshop and to essentially map out the future of their city in in terms of transportation connectivity and land use. And so myself and Steve and the mayor went there last October and we drew on a map and put tape on it and and big vision stuff. We submitted that map after the workshop and they have now synthesized all of those maps across the whole jurisdiction into this map. And so what they're asking for from us now is essentially a consensus that as a city, we agree with what the three of us put on this map. So what you're looking at is is Riverdale City. Up in the top right is a blue section. Their whole focus primarily is on centers. So they want cities to define, to define certain centers inside of the city that might have transportation connectivity opportunities. By defining centers, it allows us to congregate resources and build density around infrastructure. And so that's the way forward in Utah development. And so this exercise is meant to do that. So what we've defined in the blue is our retail district. And that largely covers Riverdale Road and the the commercial businesses along Riverdale Road there, all the way up to the edge of town on the north side. There is one change in this narrative box here. You can see the primary city for that north blue section is listed as Ogden. We will change that to to show Riverdale. So that blue then comes down to the the lower part. That's also a retail center or retail district. The orange next to it would be what we're proposing as the string town area. But for the purposes of Wasatch Front Regional Council Vision, we're calling that a city center district. And that's our only one. Up in the yellow, that is a neighborhood district, given the nature of the park and some of the things that are happening there in the neighborhood. Moving down to, yep, to Freeway Park Drive, that's a an employment area. So we're, we're looking at that. They have it again, Sunset, but part of it is going to be classified as Riverdale in the in the Riverdale Innovation Center area. And then over to the area between South Weaver Drive and I-4, we're calling that an industrial district. As we've talked in the past, that area is restricted by the APZ 2 and it restricts certain land uses. So we have envisioned a a business park of sorts, similar to the BDO and to others, where we can have warehousing and distribution there. And and again, that's a lot to make that happen. But this is very forward-thinking. This is going to go into their their Wasatch Choice Vision for the next 15 years. Actually 10 to 15 years, so 2035, 2040 timeframe. It doesn't be holding us to any type of land use restrictions as far as our code, our general plan, anything that has to do with your your legislative authority over land use. It doesn't change any of that. It's just our our communication to them of what the vision of the city might look like so that they can start to plan for regional connectivity. From this, we hope to see things like potentially an interchange there on 84 that might service both the new city center and the industrial center or or industrial district. That would be awesome. We could potentially hope for other connectivity as it relates to the Three Gate Trail up on the north end of town by 4400 South and the and the West Gate area. Potentially looking at connections on the old North Gate Road, 1150, that that dead ends now. There could potentially be some connections into Hill Air Force Base that would then wrap around to the Riverdale Innovation Center and through MIDA and out 1800. That would be amazing. So all of those things are kind of a product of this envisioning. We hope to get that in the mapping. This is just the land use portion. Those other elements that I've talked about that related relate to transportation are part of it. But we're just talking about the land use tonight. So again, no, no big deal in terms of what we're normally used to. But there is a resolution that we would recommend you approve, just so we can show that to Wasatch Front that we're in consensus as a city.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any discussion point?
Nothing, nothing binding, as Brandon said. But this was, this was the, this meeting was the first chance we had to present that interchange on 84 to UDOT. And they lit up. That was, that, we got a very positive response on that, just because they were, they were wanting to know where we were going and what we were doing. And by seeing that interchange on 84 there, it suddenly, the lights turned on about the North Gate and access to other parts of Riverdale Road. And so that, it was a good meeting overall, but like I said, none of this is binding. So it's not like you're you're tying yourselves to anything right here tonight. We just got to get it back to them saying, our council knows about this and we presented it to you.
Those are on board with them and if they have that, then they start looking our way.
Well, we discussed the interchange on Riverdale Road and I-15 as well during that meeting. So which, all of those things, we got some positive feedback on. But that not, without this meeting, they wouldn't even have known about it unless we would have had separate meetings. So there was a lot involved in it besides just this. But this is nothing new that you haven't already seen, I don't think, for the most part. Just some designations and we had to put something down and clarify which roads were busier than others and important and all that kind of stuff, so.
Great, thank you. Go ahead.
All of these identified areas are consistent with our general plan?
No, because the general plan didn't really have a focus on a center-based kind of organization. It's land use base, yes, but not in the sense that we're talking about identifying certain areas. There will be an opportunity over time, if some of this actually starts to come to fruition, that we may want to look at amending our general plan.
Okay.
But this does not amend it in fundamentally, nor does it require you to make any changes whatsoever.
Anyone else? Okay, motion is in order.
Move to approve resolution 2025-10, a resolution of the Riverdale City Council accepting a proposed map depicting possible future land uses related to the Wasatch Front Regional Council Wasatch Choice Vision.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Maragoni, would you pull the council, please?
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Council Arnold?
Yes.
Council Hanson?
Yes.
Council Stevens?
Yes.
Council Richard?
Yes.
Okay, that is unanimous in favor. Moving on to action item number four, discussion and direction regarding pickleball courts in Riverdale City.
As I mentioned in the pre-planning meeting, we talked about this again. I don't know if that was the same meeting that was, Mike was here that night, but somewhere close to that. We discussed the possibility of putting a pickleball court down Golden Spike. We we went back and forth and there was some some concerns presented as far as the cost goes for resurfacing that and how much this was going to cost us. But I don't think we ever took an official vote on it. We got some direct direction about it. We talked about it in staff meeting the next day and we were kind of all over the place. And so I thought I better get it back before the council to make sure we know exactly what you want or don't want. So the proposal was, if you recall, was to put the the pickleball court down there in Golden Spike Park. I think where the, isn't the sand volleyball, Sean, is that where it was at? And Sean, I don't know if you want to explain more to them about what you had in mind on that. But it's basically just a pickleball court. And I believe it contained two courts, if I recall correctly.
Three courts?
Three? So there's room enough to have three on there. And it was just a matter of whether or not you wanted to do it. Because one of the ideas is that we're going to pursue some grants this year to help pay for that. So if we could obtain the grants, then a good portion of the initial cost would be covered. But obviously, when you put those things in, there are maintenance costs, so that would be an issue at some point in time, so.
And the RAM grants don't, would wouldn't be able to be used for resurfacing?
I don't think you can use them for maintenance kind of stuff.
You can put it in.
They want new construction.
Yeah.
So we brought it up based on the city survey because it came up numerous times. Rich hears it a ton at this, at the community center. Just as I did, when I left the meeting, so it was in the budget planning meeting that we had. I left the meeting, I felt like there wasn't support for it and that we ought to just pull it for this year. And I guess that's why Steve's, you know, and Steve's like, well, I don't know if I felt the same, so.
And and the mayor felt differently. He didn't think that that's where you were going with it. He said the same thing. He says, I get asked about pickleball courts more than anything besides the Trader Joe's in the city. And so we thought we better get it back, make sure we get some clarification on it.
Do you have some concerns on it, which I brought up at the last meeting about the maintenance? Just because sometimes that's easily overlooked and it can be a big cost. Not just the resurfacing, but if there ends up being fences or lighting, all of that kind of stuff. But I think, I think I feel like we're just in a really hard position right now to make that kind of a commitment. Because Romer's right in the middle of building all of those pickleball courts and it's quite a few. And that's pretty local to our residents. We already offer the the pickleball in the rec center pretty frequently. And then the tennis courts are striped for pickleball. My other concern with it, I think right now, is that we're just gearing up to really start to analyze the 2030 concerns. And frequently, and you know how I feel about the seniors, frequently the seniors are brought up as a point of of a budget black hole. And so to say that that's a concern that we're constantly concerned about, it's constantly brought up about the seniors center. But we're just going to go ahead and do pickleball courts and commit that kind of money when we're already concerned about the money going to the seniors? And do we have the long-term longevity to be able to to meet those needs? It makes me feel like we're not, we don't have enough information at this point as we move forward towards 2030 to know for certain what's, what needs to happen. And so that, to me, it feels like a big commitment because, and it feels hard for me to say, yeah, let's do pickleball courts when, you know, how frequently we're talking about the seniors center. And that just doesn't seem equitable on behalf of the seniors. But and because there is so, there are so many options for pickleball locally up on 40th Street. Aren't they building like 12 up in Romer Park or something, or maybe more?
West Haven's got a huge park.
Quite a few.
So I kind of struggle with that, but.
Oh, I, we was just, I said, it's just an idea, like there was nothing set in stone.
I love the grant idea and I do like the idea of if we can do that. The other thing is, you know, we don't know the long-term position of the elementary school. And we're, we have first right of refusal, right? And so there could be a great opportunity in the future, depending on how the school makes their decisions to put something in where it's not as close to other houses, where it's more accessible, where we can get some great use out of that land if the if the city ends up with it. But and there's just so many of those ambiguities for me that that's my concern about it, I think.
Well, and that that parking lot is a problem. It it's tough to say what it is now because last summer it was torn up. It's tough to say what it is now because last summer it was torn up with the water project, but that that parking lot is a problem. Just on a normal day, you put in three pickleball courts and have them dunking around while everybody's.
It would definitely be nice if we was going to build them to have a bigger, better area to build them. It was just an option because there is already parking lot, and it's for most of the week, that parking lot's way underutilized. But it was a place that it could probably fit and work. But if you was ideally build them, I think you would build a bigger setup of courts, and you'd have a builder bigger parking lot, and the residents are a concern. We build a splash pad, we heard about it for years. It was in their backyard, and it's noisy, and it's going to draw people. It's going to be no different. And then the other concern was is the splash pad, the residents said, well, you built that, now everybody besides Riverdale residents can use the park. I mean, we heard that for a long time, and a pickleball will draw people. So I just wanted to make sure that we was being responsive to hear what was hearing on the surveys and giving you options, and then this is what we're looking for is feedback, so.
And I love the sand volleyball pit, by the way. It'd be sad to see that go.
You must be the only one that uses it.
Make some comments. I'm down here. I have a little bit different take. I'm a hard no on this, and it's because I consider Riverdale Park and Golden Spike Park as neighborhood parks, and they're not that big. And if we put, I'm against permanent structures. Now, I utilize the the community center, a little workout area. I have my machine, I'm looking out the window at what I consider to be the monument to somebody's vanity, and I'm talking about the amphitheater, a permanent structure that's maybe used once a year. And it was kind of surprising that he says, oh, yeah, we use it for the bike or whatever, and I've seen them out there a time or two, but it's just like, if you start putting permanent structures in these neighborhood parks, you're cutting down on the open spaces. And I have reservations about the outdoor classroom also, because that's putting in permanent fixtures. Now, not to say sand volleyball court is not a permanent structure, it is to a limited extent, but it can be easily swapped out. I'm, I just do not like the idea of putting in, you know, oh, we've got this grant money we've got to utilize. No, we don't have to utilize it. Let the other communities get it and maintain it and have that expense. There's nothing sacrosanct that says we have to provide this for our residents and everybody else. They can do that, too. Washington Terrace can do that, Roy can do that. You know, there's, it doesn't, I love the fact that get ramp money for events like glory days, but putting in permanent structures in our parks and cutting down on the open spaces, I struggle with that, and that's why I'm a hard no at this time. Now, if they were, if certain areas opened up, there would be more land available and do a little bit bigger project than three courts? Yeah, that's, that's, but you know, let's talk about that when that happens, whether it's developed here or, you know, at a different time. But no, at this point.
Anyone else have any?
I'm not as hard no as as Bart is, and and I think that that I'm okay delaying it, so pulling it out of the current budget discussion. So not moving forward with it this year, and then maybe doing a little bit more research to find out, you know, what other cities have, how their courts are working and what the costs overall for them are. So, you know, I'm, I'm okay if we don't do anything with it.
And I echo Counselor Hanson's comments as well. I mean, with all those new courts going in up on Roamer and the other ones, I think we just wait to let that play out, see what the need is. If they're at capacity all the time and there's really need, then I think we revisit it, but but I think it's premature at this point.
Anyone else?
No.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Just a thought, as you consider parks and their use, especially on the next item, maybe this is a segue on our strategic planning, but there's a couple of national standards that govern the use of parks and how parks are designated in terms of their type and use and location. One of them is the proximity of of parks, and generally the standard is a 10 minute walk or a half a mile. And so that's one thing that I would I would recommend that you consider as you think about where parks go and how they're used. The other standard is the square footage of parks per capita, essentially. So how many, how many square feet of parks do we have for our population? And I can't quote that one, maybe you can, but it's like 1,000 square feet or or an acre per 1,000 people or something like that. So those are some standards that I would would recommend that we consider as we're talking about parks. There's also different types of park use, and Counselor Stevens, as you as you mentioned, the 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 passive and active use are different among parks. And so as you look at what to put in a park, whether it's a fixed asset or just green space, there is passive recreation and active recreation. And for the most part, all the studies that I've looked at, active recreation is the trend. And so having parks that are just giant fields of green with a sidewalk in the middle, those are the least used parks. Having a park with a striped soccer field is is going to move towards more of the active recreation versus the passive. And so some parks need to be just a passive park like our trail. You know, that's, it's just a walking, and so that's more passive. But there are other parks that we do need to have facilities built into them so that we can that we can accommodate that active recreation that's also a key element of our community. So just a couple of thoughts as we think about parks in general and as we go through strategic planning and how to do this.
I think one of the things that we should do is is actually put a park plan together and actually work towards something instead of piecemealing it, you know. Golden Spike Park really isn't that fun. It's it's like, it's a tale of two parks, really. You have two parking lots, you know. I guess the east parking lot is hot as can be, and then you go around the west parking lot, and it's shady and one big pavilion instead of like having the smaller ones like over at Riverdale Park. And so, I mean, I think even trees and stuff, or I don't know what we would do on the one side, but it's it's heavily used on the west side and on the east side. It's hardly used at all that I, other than probably organized when they're doing actual ballgames, so.
And we've already had this conversation partly. I would encourage you to look at the general plan. There's a whole section on parks and recreation. There is quite a bit of information about the inventory of parks and what we have, and then I believe there's some dialogue there about what future parks might look like. So I think that's probably a good place to start this dialogue at because we've already maybe solved some for some of these things. And then from that, looking at our parks a little bit closer as we think about future growth.
Anyone have any more comments before we move on?
Yeah.
So what was the consensus?
That would be nice. I mean, I think I got the feel of it, but I'd like to have a consensus just so we we can say we did get a true reflection of what the council wanted.
So I would say that we delay it, so we got.
Not this year, not this fiscal year?
Yeah. Okay, so.
Budget.
Consensus to no on the moving on on that one. Okay, action item number five, strategic planning discussion. Mr. Brooks?
Here's another one. I did send out to Counselor Richter and Annie my finalized proposal on that kind of thing. Again, that's not binding, it's just something for reference for you, but I think it's a good starting point for us. But so we know that we had we nominated those two last time. We were planning on having Cody, obviously, because the financial portion of this, myself and the mayor. Beyond that, do you have any particular people that you want? We did bounce around to possibly getting one of the planning commissioners. The only thing, and not that it's that big a deal, because I'm sure we'd find volunteers, but I'm a little bit concerned. We we call up on planning commission quite a bit, and they don't get a ton of rewards for that, and the same thing with employees. Some of these meetings will probably be after hours, and I don't necessarily want to bring them back or have them coming in late, so. But we'll do whatever you want. I just didn't know if you wanted, how much more you wanted as far as input goes, or if you think that group is enough, or what you wanted us to do on that. This is for the actual committee that's going to eventually put this together and bring that final document back to the council on how we're going to approach this or what we're going to try and attempt to do.
I have a couple of thoughts.
Go ahead.
I've been thinking about it since we talked about it at that meeting. Community wise, we, I know we talked about that a little bit, and I think you're right, it's pretty limited. I think the city's done a great job, and way more of the residents are familiar with our situation than used to be, but maybe not as up to speed where they could provide some assistance on that. I do think it may be worth considering reaching out to Doug Peterson to see if he has an interest in assisting. And I have heard from another resident that he would be willing to assist, but I'm hesitant for that resident to be too involved and be pulled away from his other things.
It's your brother, it's okay.
No, it's my dad.
Oh, okay.
And I wonder on both of those, too. The other thing I was thinking about with both of those, because I think there's a lot of benefit there because of their history and their experience with the issue. And yeah, there, yeah. But I'll keep some of those thoughts in my head, but I don't know if they need to be there actively all the time, or if we as a group with the rest of the group kind of focus and work on things and pull them in to kind of get their feedback on some of the different things. I don't know, I've had different thoughts about it, because I, you know, I think we're the ones that are invested, and and it's on our shoulders as the council, as everybody here, to to come up with a good solution to get us through. But they both have a history that that could provide some insights, and maybe that's needed all the time, maybe that's needed just occasionally when we want to run things by them. But but those were the two thoughts I had, and I know the one person, he did, my dad did suggest that he would have an interest in consulting or assisting if we wanted it. But for my personal reasons outside of the city, I would want to minimize it for whether he wants to or not. But I said I would tell people since he asked.
I like this smaller group as well in general, but I do like the the opportunity to bring on consultants style, you know, professional advice and that, or or even just community members for certain certain elements. But from my perspective, I like the smaller, they seem to be more effective. If you get too many in there, it sometimes you grind grind down.
And I think Kent Anderson, he's shown an interest in running for city council, and he's been very involved. So maybe somebody like him would be interested, knowledgeable and something like that. But just to, I think, I think there's so much personal interest sometimes when you get into somebody that, you know, I'm going to say real estate or something like that, that they, I don't know if they have the best interest of the community all the time, you know, so what Riverdale wants to be, because I know my view of of Riverdale is smaller than, you know, some of the stuff, the motor view thing, you know, I'm going by practically with a measuring tape, driving by that every day and going, what is going on with the cement in there, you know, kind of thing, so. But I do think smaller, because if if we're going to actually have some movement, participation and all that kind of stuff, smaller is always better.
So by saying smaller, is it fair for me to assume that we'll stick with that basic core group, but reach out and have that option, especially in in areas where we might find people who would be very vested and knowledgeable in there?
And I think Larry, I mean, if he's, if he has the time to do that, he's got so much knowledge and stuff that would help. But if you turn around and get, you know, somebody that's just, you know, I'll say it on the record, you get Mike Davis, you know, he'll just yell at you.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah.
Down here.
You just raise your hand, I'm looking down.
Well, I have. You're always looking that way.
I'm choosing not to call on you for a reason, but no, no, just kidding.
Just, you know, one or two quick sentences. What is the purpose? What is your goal? What's the, Stephen R. Covey, what's your end game? Start at the end and work back, you know? What is this, the purpose of this committee in short?
It's to steer us to 2030.
Okay, are you decision making capacities?
No, not that committee. Nope, it's got to come back to you all.
That's why we can't have three council members on it, because you can't have a corps.
Right, and we don't want to have formal meetings.
That said, the the two names that Annie brought up are good. They can give a historical perspective, but I think there's some dynamics that have changed significantly from when that was put in almost 20 years ago. And, you know, and I've I've had conversations with different people over time, and and, you know, the the wherewithal of going forward, I mean, it took a lot for those people to get that done back in, when was that, 2008, '07? I can't remember. So for, you know, and and they did a yeoman's job, but I don't know if that's the, that's the direction we want to continue, and I guess that's the purpose of the of the committee. But keeping it small is where it needs to be, especially if this is more of a steering committee rather than it's not decision making.
That's what it is.
And so if it's a steering committee, smaller is better. And because bringing somebody up to speed, it's taken, it would take a good, long time to be a contributing participant on that committee if you're starting from behind the curve.
And I like the idea of those two, even like Mike said, just acting maybe even reaching out when we need them, reaching out for the advice or the, you know, when if we start looking into legislative action, it would be beneficial to have some of those insights from someone who was up there. And but yeah, I agree. I think smaller is better. We can, we can organize better, meet quicker, and we have some of the insights of right now. But yeah, I think utilizing the resources when, when and if we need them, that it's worth keeping our options open for sure.
Okay. So if you get make consensus on that, stick smaller with options to go up.
Of Riverdale, that's coming in with a chainsaw somewhere. No, so we have a consensus to go with the smaller group that's been identified?
Yeah, previously identified group.
Consensus unanimous. Okay, moving to action item number six, consideration to enter into a closed session pursuant to one or more of the provisions of the Utah Open and Public Meetings Act. We would need a motion to go into that closed session.
Can I ask a question? Oh, well, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Do we, I know that it seems like we have normally on the agenda had the specific reasons that we were going into, whether it was.
Fine property or whatever.
Whether it was a property or a imminent thing. And I I know it probably doesn't make a difference. I mean, anybody that's going to show up is going to get kicked out when we go into it. I just wondered if there was a reason that this one didn't have, was more general like that.
I, and this was the first one that's been like that. I think it was just a matter, we were trying to get this out, and I had talked to Michelle three or four different times. We kept throwing different things at her, and I don't think she knew exactly which ones we were. And so she just condensed it all into one is basically what happened. But I think you're correct, Stacy. I do think we need to list those separately, just in fairness to the public.
So a motion would be in order? So moved, can I make a motion?
You can.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, roll call, sorry, roll call.
Council Arnold?
Yes.
Council Stevens?
Yes.
Council Richter?
Yes.
Council Hanson?
Yes.
Council Haas?
Yes.
Okay, we will shut it down, everybody. If you could turn off your mics and.